At this time, we'll call the July 21st, 2023 meeting of the Wilson County Planning Commission in order. Anyone wishing to give testimony before this board today, if you would, please stand and raise your right hand. I hereby swear the testimony I give today to be the whole truth. Please say, "I do."
I do.
Thank you. We need to approve the minutes from the June 16th meeting. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second. We have a motion for Mr. Ash, second by Mr. Jewell, to approve. All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. We do have a new state law that has come into effect starting this month that we have to have a public hearing before each meeting to give people opportunity to speak on different things. We do ask that you keep your comments brief and limit them to three minutes. And I do think that we have Mr. Bob Zinker, I know for sure who wants to take advantage of this opportunity. He was actually part of our agenda, but we're going to go ahead and let him get his done during the public comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob Zinker. I live in Wilson County on Old Murphy's Borough Road East, so just south of kind of the city here on 231, kind of in that little band that goes between. I'm here to speak today about the fact I live in a residential area and we have a few commercial businesses kind of at the end of that road. One of those was a company that's called Hydro Vac, Tennessee Hydro Vac Incorporated, on a property that's at 6,700 Old Murphy's Borough East. This property, you guys did an approval related to their design. It looks back in August of '21. So it's been a little while. The minute they were kind of approved related to the land, they started doing their business out of this location. Just they threw down some rock and started bringing these large trucks back and forth within the area. In the springtime of this year, they started actually doing the construction. Never really thought about it before, but the way the building was actually positioned on the land totally looks like they're going to continue to use Old Murphy's Borough Road as their main primary enter and exit. And actually, by the design drawings that you guys approved back in August of '21, that's the case. There's an optional entrance and exits related to this to go out to 231. These are large, large trucks that are coming and going associated on a residential road that doesn't have the ability to maintain the weight that it is. I'll show that just real quickly by a quick picture that I took today related to, whoops, haha, that's my daughter. Alrighty, we'll try that again. Apologize for that. There we go. Some degrading of the road on the front and the backside where they're coming and turning in and out of that gravel road area that they've been doing the business for. Now, they've been bringing dirt and mud and rock throughout the last two years. And typically, sometimes I might stop and wave to them and ask them to actually clean up their waste associated off the roads. They're pretty kind about it, but I thought this was going to be a temporary type of situation. I mean, two years was a little bit more temporary than I expected, but that's the case. So finally, they're here to actually doing the work related to it, and they're not going to be entering and exit out of 231. It's an optional exit, you know. Warren did the design work, they put it, you guys showed it, but you guys did not require it. I'm here really today just to ask that you guys do better. I think this should have not have been something out to the residential area. Should have absolutely gone to 231 as their entrance exit. Could this be a construction entrance and exit? Sure, no problem. It would have been temporary and it wouldn't be a risk to the residents who are on that road. We are a residential community. We're not largely a commercial. I understand. We're snug and we're right there on 231. And some commercial properties, which I don't think is the trend, I think most of the trending and building that's occurring down on 231 right now is residential. We're, I think a lot of people think the 231 corridor is all going to be commercial eventually. Go back and look. Everybody who's building down there, largely, yes, RAI's down there, yes, the new park is going to be down there, but everybody else, it's new houses that are going up straight off of 231. This is kind of not the type of, you know, entrance and exit kind of concepts we want related to our residential areas. Last item, not related to the planning area, I did do a complaint related to what you guys required, which I think was very good. Silt fences, told Storm and Water and spoke with them, and they said that, nope, they went out there and they checked it last month that they're totally there. I can't trespass on their property, so I can't see if they've got the silt fence up or not, but luckily, two weeks ago, they did some clearing of the ground that they're not supposed to disturb per the drawings, and I could totally see now absolutely no silt fences at all up and down the entire way. So either Storm didn't actually go out there and inspect it, which I'm sure it wasn't the case, maybe they relied on the inspections that they had from a third party that I think every building site's supposed to do. I hope that that vendor gets spoke to, the fact that there's no silt fences around this whole entire property at all, and that we can do better as a community. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom, do you have any comments you wish to share on that response?
No, I will respond that I have contacted the engineer for the site plan approval, Mr. Warren and Kramer Tuggle, Mr. Tuggle, and made them aware of the concerns brought forward by Mr. Zinker. I did talk with my stormwater department, they did tell me that the project had been properly stabilized and they had erosion control up and everything else. The entrance is planned as approved off of Old Murphy's Borough Road. In talking with my stormwater department, they had been in more recent contact with the actual operator than I had, and they told me that there's a sign up, or they've got signage up directing their trucks to go to the south rather than to the north where Mr. Zinker and some of his residential neighbors live on East Old Murphy's Borough Road. Occasionally, I'm sure there may be a truck that still continues to go north as opposed to south, but I do think the applicant's representatives and at some level, the owners and operators of Hydro Vac are aware of some of the concerns and are trying to address some of them. I will say that this project has been longstanding in terms of trying to get from when they first entered the site and presumably started construction to when they're actually building a building. Do understand they're trying to start in earnest construction of the building at present, and hopefully, once they get that done and get it stabilized, they may be able to clean up a little more. I'll even confess that at different points, I felt as, because Hydro Vac is Zone C3, I felt as though maybe we had gotten a switcheroo with regard to what they were actually doing, because it seems to be more of an industrial-esque type operation there than what I anticipated from their site plan.
Tom, what did they do? What's going to be their program?
It's, they do something with, they use water, obviously, Hydro Vac, but they, they're cleaning out.
These very large piece of machinery, they bring water into them?
I've seen all the trucks, I know exactly where he's talking about.
Down at the bottom of it, it shoots into the ground, is kind of the idea. There's pipes, so it's an idea of instead of having to excavate around pipes, the water pushes all of that dirt and ruck.
It's kind of like a water pig.
Yeah, that's exactly it.
Boring holes or possibly even cleaning out.
Deep well injection or something like that.
Yeah, or possibly even cleaning out existing drainage systems or pipe systems.
Oh, they're big.
Oh, they're, I mean, they're gigantic.
Yeah.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
But I can commit that we'll look into a little bit more of what Mr. Zinker's concerns are more immediately about erosion control. My stormwater department, back here and in attendance at today's meeting, so I'm sure they heard the same thing I did from Mr. Zinker, so I'll ask them to look back into it again, make sure that they've done everything they need to in terms of stabilization.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Do we have any one else here today wishing to speak during the public comments session? Okay.
Is it in regards to just to that area?
This is just in general talk. Each individual case, you'll still have the opportunity to speak on that's on our agenda.
Okay, yeah, I would like to speak on the agenda on Couchville Pike.
Okay, when it comes up, you'll certainly have the opportunity to do that, ma'am.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. Let's see here, Tom, we'll start with new business. Property on Couchville Pike. Is there an application?
Yes. An application has been submitted by Lee Zoller of Division Street Development to rezone a 34.9 acre tract located at 1113 Couchville Pike, being referenced as parcel 39 on Wilson County Property Map 138. The request is to rezone this property from its current R1 rural residential zoning to C4 Plan Commercial. C4 is a master plan specific zone district, meaning a master plan of the property is required for rezoning. Uses proposed include distribution, office, commercial sales, light manufacturing and warehousing, and governmental uses. Those are the uses that the master plan that has been submitted are proposing on the property, which are all allowable uses within the C4 district, but the master plan is used to kind of limit down what uses specifically they envision developing on the property. Staff will note that the county land use plan that was adopted in 2006 specifically calls for commercial development of the property in this location fronting along the north side of Couchville Pike, between Lone Oak Road and Underwood Road, with the implementation of buffer areas between any such development and nearby low-density residential and agricultural development or zone districts. Staff will note that there are severe drainage issues that plague surrounding properties in this immediate area in heightened intensity or heightened duration rainfall events. Planning staff has witnessed water flowing across the road in somewhat close proximity of this parcel on several occasions. That would include water inundation across Lone Oak Road as well as water on properties across the street on Underwood Road. The road commission and road commission staff, planning commission and planning staff, and urban type public facilities board, and stormwater staff have some ability to affect road and drainage improvement in relation to the ultimate development of this property. However, these abilities and statutory authorities wane as one gets away from the parcel itself and its immediate adjacent road frontage. The initial master plan shows a warehouse building over top of existing sinkholes on the property, and this is a result of a new requirement that the county commission also required, which was submittal of a topographic survey that includes location of cars features and environmental factors, including drainage patterns on the property. And in looking at that and evaluating it, as well as evaluating it on site, staff did notice the existence of existing sinkholes on the property, some of which have already been treated by well injection, some of which are just natural features on the property. The conceptual master plan for the document, or for the rezoning, does show seemingly proposing covering over several of those cars features, which from staff's presumption would mean that those sinkholes would be capped and no longer take surface drainage into the holes. Staff does have concerns about where the water would now go, both in terms of surface runoff and within the water table below ground. Speaking with the consulting county engineer on this case, they have outlined that sinkholes can be capped and mitigated, but in the instance of this site, with the number of sinkholes present, a much better outcome would be to leave at least some of the sinkholes alone or mitigate within an injection well to allow them to still take some water volume. This would require any resulting site plan that comes, if this property is rezoned for construction, to differ a bit from the conceptual plan that's been submitted for rezoning. It would likely mean a smaller building would have to be proposed to accommodate such a scenario. However, that step would come in more detail at the site plan stage should this property be rezoned. Staff can recommend approval of this rezoning request since the current land use plan does call out the property for commercial development. Should the county planning commissioner, the county commission ultimately decide to approve this request for rezoning, a site plan will be required at the time the property is proposed for development under the commercial zoning, and all commercial requirements, including permitting, paving, landscaping, building material, and public sewer provisions would apply to the property unless variance was granted by the Board of Zoning Appeals for any of the specifically listed site plan and commercial requirements. Staff has made copies of the rezoning request available to the road commission executive staff and school system executive staff, as well as emergency services executive staff. To date, staff has been given no feedback regarding the rezoning. Staff will note that the proposed rezoning falls within the Glabeau WEMA Station's five-mile ISO response zone for fire and emergency services. County engineer has requested that the applicant planning commission and other interested parties be put on notice that the presence of sinkholes, caves, wetlands, streams, and land areas that are extremely flat marshy or steep may affect the development of this tract and the total number of lots realized through subdivision development. And that's, again, even though that's a statement that you see in many rezonings, that's a little bit indicative of what we were saying in regards to the site-specific features ultimately affecting how this property gets developed. The rezoning does not appear to be in close or immediate proximity to any century farm based on information provided to the Wilson County Planning Department. In addition, Glabeau Utility District also wanted to make the applicant aware of their concerns and also to make them aware that they will be involved in the development of the property, and their comments are as follows. The Glabeau Utility District understands this item as a rezoning request and that formal slash complete design plans will be prepared and submitted for review if the site is rezoned. The district has had no contact with the property owner or developer or the project surveyor to discuss the proposed development of the property if it is rezoned as requested. Since no request for water service application has been filed, no water service availability letter has been issued. Until such time that the district has been provided with full information regarding the water requirements for any proposed development of this property, we're not in a position to comment on water service availability to the site. Again, while we understand that this is a rezoning request and not a formal site plan review, the district respectfully wants to note that, one, the name of Lone Oak Road is shown incorrectly on all documents as submitted, two, there is an 18-inch diameter water line on the subject property across its entire frontage on Couchville Pike, and three, there is also an 18-inch diameter water line on the subject property across its entire road frontage on Lone Oak Road that may ultimately affect how the property gets developed. With that, I'm through with my comments.
All right. Thank you. Do we have anyone here today wishing to speak on this case? If you would, please come forward. State your name for the record, please.
James Craig Davis.
Thank you. Please come forward.
Can I give you some pictures and just y'all pass them down?
Certainly.
Hello, my name is James Craig Davis. I live at 3421 Underwood Road, one property separating my family from the proposed warehouse at the end of Underwood and Couchville Pike. Just so I feel like I'm speaking to a non-biased board, do any of y'all have a monetary interest in either, either with the developer or the landowner in the property we are discussing?
Does that the record show? Everybody said no.
Okay. I hate to ask that, but because of social media, there's conversation that some of you are already for this, and money is a deciding factor. I'm here to oppose the building of this warehouse, not just for the unsightliness or the traffic or the unsavory people another warehouse will bring to our area, but more than anything, I'm here to oppose the warehouse because of flooding. Flooding will most definitely be an issue, and it's already an issue on Underwood Road. Such a warehouse sitting at an elevated enough area that it will never flood on that property will most definitely create a dam for multiple families and houses that already experienced flooding issues when there is heavy rain. I've lived here my whole life, 48 years, and since the warehouses have started being built, have noticed a definite beyond a shadow of a doubt difference in the way water comes up from the ground when there is very little rain at all. From 2010 to now is a perfect example of the issues I'm talking about at my house. And I know all my neighbors can't say this, because I know some of them got flooded out in 2010. We had no issues in 2010, but as the pictures show, from 2019, 2023, water has become more of a problem. Water comes up from my backyard, reaching the same areas my septic tank lines, also water from my neighbors on the left-hand side crosses my backyard into my neighbors on the right-hand side. And when this water is not allowed to flow freely, you will in essence be damming up a free-flowing creek, which will most definitely be a flooding issue for multiple families and homes. When the original owners of this property in discussion were still alive, they were friends with my grandparents. I wasn't even old enough to carry a gun, but my grandfather and I would walk every inch of that property, so I know there are numerous sinkholes on it. I cannot imagine, and I don't think anybody truly knows, what filling all those sinkholes up will do. It breaks my heart that our once small community, small country community, has been turned into a laverne, complete with homeless people, as the pictures show, documented by pictures and a wellness check call to the sheriff's office by my wife. In this area where I live, there seems to be a false pretense that the people that own this land have more say in what goes on in our community than someone who may have just moved here or lived here 10 or 20 years. As far as I know, there's no seniority in owning land. And even though I have been here my whole life, 48 years, feel that newcomers have just as much of a voice. I feel people that have used their hard-earned money to buy their property and houses have just as much say as those who inherited theirs. I will end with this. Let it be record that James C. Davis said that if this passes, there will be flooding issues. I will say again, there will be flooding issues. This will adversely affect many families and homes. I ask you to consider the livelihood of many over the already abundance of another warehouse. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have anyone else wishing to speak on this case today? Please come forward and state your name for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Julie Kirby, and I live at 3461 Underwood Road. My property directly connects the proposed rezoning property. And, you know, I just want to start by saying I'm not here to bash warehouses, I'm not here to bash progress, I'm not here to bash people that want to make money off their land. That's the American dream, it's the American way, it's why we all bought our property and want to build equity and want to have land. So I'm not here to do that, but when others' rights to do what they want with their land impede upon a whole bunch of other people's rights, then it has to be brought up and addressed. And my property, like I said, directly connects to this property, and we already fled. That's what I'm really here to talk about today. It's not about, you know, our way of life, or what we want to see or don't want to see. Again, I'm all for progress, I'm all for growth, I'm all for people making money, but, you know, zoning is an issue because it can affect other people. Therefore, I can't put a liquor store or strip club or something else where I want to on my land because it would affect a lot of other people. Same as this warehouse. But this isn't like a liquor store where it can affect your, you know, crime rates and your, you know, way of life. This actually could ruin our property. It will ruin our property. I have photos on my iPad, he has photos, but I have hundreds of photos from my property flooding. Now, I've lived there 10 years, I know I haven't lived here my whole life, but I've lived there 10 years, and when we first moved there, there was no flooding. We had a runoff creek, the runoff creek never, ever came close to hitting the banks, not at all. As the warehouses came, as loves came, as the runoff just completely changed, we started flooding like crazy. And so it comes way up over the banks, it comes into a cabin that we've built, it comes up under our deck, it completely backs up into our neighbor Davis's, and then several neighbors just beyond. But the guy who really got hit the hardest in the last flood was our neighbor across the street on Underwood, which was Clint Thomas, and his whole garage was under. And this, again, this, there's no warehouse on that property. Right now, that's running into those sinkholes, it's running off, it goes into that property, but it's not running off enough right now. So, you know, what do we do? What do we do if we become McCrary? What do we do when our houses flood out and we can't sell them? Someone said, "Hey, you haven't lived here long enough to be able to dictate this." Well, I've invested in this property, we've improved the property a lot. We are good neighbors to our neighbors. We help our neighbors when they flood. We, you know, pitch into our neighbors and we care about our neighbors. That's why, like I said, I don't want to impede upon anyone making money, but the way they make that money has to be checked because we're going to flood out. And then what do we do? Someone said, "Well, sell to the developers." Okay, well, that's easy to say. What about my neighbors who just have a couple acres? What if we don't want to sell, but they want to sell to the developers? They can't sell to the developers. We can't sell to the developers if our neighbors don't sell to the developers. So what do we do? Do we build a little tiny house out of the flood zone and live on that like our neighbors, some of our neighbors at McCrary are doing? What do we do? Some of those folks can't sell their homes. So I feel like we're in a big, big quandary here as homeowners, these folks right here that live right on it, and that's probably going to affect probably eight or nine houses of people that I directly know and see every day. What do we do? You know? I'm happy for those folks to make their money on this property and sell it, but is there another way? So we don't put this behemoth of a warehouse that is huge? I've seen the drawings of it. That doesn't even fully show what it looks like, the actual drawings are crazy what it's going to block off. And both parking lots as of now dump onto, one parking lot dumps onto Lone Oak, one parking lot dumps onto Underwood. So that's just traffic. Again, I'm not here to even talk about that. That's not great, but that's not my big problem. That won't keep me from selling my house if I have to, or it won't keep me from living in my house. This warehouse will keep me from living in my house, because I promise you, these properties will flood. They will flood. We have pictures right now, no warehouse there, and it's terrible. So, you know, I have pictures I can share with you guys. I have Clint Thomas's pictures as well. He wasn't able to be here today, couldn't get off work. But, you know, I beg of you guys just to think of us as neighbors and say, if this were my property, or my granny's property, or my mom's property, or my sister's property, would I want them to be in that same situation that the McCrary folks are in? You know, what do they do? This is my whole investment. This is my retirement. I don't have other investments other than my property. So I just beg of you guys to really think of us as neighbors, and what would you do? And what would you want if you lived on my property that borders that property? I'm that long strip right there north of that blue line. So, anyway, I thank you all for your time.
Is that you?
Yes, that's us right there. I thank you all for your time, and I just hope you really put some heart and soul into thinking about this, because I don't know what we're going to do if it floods and we can't sell our property. You know, I don't know what we're going to do, all of us. What are we going to do? So I really hope you guys humanize this and not think about this as business, but as people's lives, and it's going to affect eight or nine different families, and, you know, it's keeping me up at night because I just think about, what am I going to do? I have a dog rescue on this property, we have a business, we have a registered small business there, we have our home. What are we going to do? So thank you, guys, I appreciate your time, and I appreciate you really putting some thought into this. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Christopher? I'm sorry. Christopher, do we have the master plan?
Do you want the topo or the master?
Well, I'll let the public determine which one they want to show, but I can show you some of the cars features here. You can kind of see where this, this is not a great scale to see it all, but, I mean, you've got cars features right here, and you've got a series that have been treated by well injection here, and there's one right here, and then switch to the, this is the property. This was rezoned for a gas station some time ago. This is in concept where they were talking about putting in an industrial building. I will point out one thing, that while drainage, I'm not sure exactly where drainage, because this is a conceptual plan, will all be directed, but their traffic access is proposed to come off of Couchville, not Underwood or Lone Oak. And I'm not defending anything, I'm just pointing out facts of the concept plan.
And we can see too that going forward if it were to go forward.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this case?
My name is Donnie Dallin, and I live at 3399 Underwood Road, and you've just heard from the two lots that are adjacent, I'm the third lot up. My daughter and I-
You're up here, Mr. Dallin? This is Underwood, you're up here somewhere?
It is. I'm the third, I'm the third lot up on the same side of Underwood. My daughter and I have 12 acres there, we've each built houses, me and my wife, and her and her family, and two grandkids. And so we built in 2016. And so we built in two thousand sixteen. And ever since we've been there, there's always been a warehouse being built on Couchville Pike exit, somewhere, there's always been one. Our concern, like our neighbors, is the drainage. Our lot, there's lots above us flow down and so it comes across my property, across my driveway, my daughter's driveway, across their two lots and drains into the land under consideration. I feel sorry for the poor people across, as they mentioned, Underwood Road because they, they flood worse than, than we do. So common sense tells me that if we put a warehouse on that, drainage has to be affected. There's simply nowhere for the water to go. I'm sure the family has an engineer that's going to tell you, well, we've got that taken care of, we've got it covered. But there's no way, there is no way an engineer can know about the subterranean flow of water on the property and how a development will affect that. Our own planning director, as you just heard, has expressed concerns about the draining issue on this property. Another concern we have that's not been mentioned is the blasting that's going to be required to prepare this land. We've had to deal with that ever since we've been there when they built the rooms to go and the Napa warehouses across eight forty. You hear that whistle blow and here it comes and your house starts shaking. Couple of warehouses now being built across eight forty, same thing, four o'clock in the afternoon some days, here it comes, your house starts shaking. So you say, well, okay, file a claim. Yeah, well, good luck with that. I can't imagine the hoops you'd have to jump through to even be successful in that regard. If I counted correctly, we have twenty-three, twenty-three warehouses on the Couchville Pike exit. And across two more, across eight forty, as I said, there are two more being built. So you ask, well, what's the big deal about building one more? What's, what's the big deal about building one more? Well, it's not that the family cannot develop their property, they can develop their property. It's zoned for houses with forty thousand square foot lots. And obviously, this request is about making the property more valuable. The Gavin, uh, the Garvin Orange family, which county records show own that, they're obviously going to be enriched. So it's always about the money, just is, it's always about the money. And so the fam, uh, the family's mindset may be, well, we want to get this through and the neighbors will just have to deal with whatever consequences. You and I both know, forty thousand square foot homes with lots versus a warehouse that's completely covered with warehouse and pavement, that's entirely two different things. At the very least, to cover myself, to protect myself, I'm going to have to buy flood insurance. And my State Farm agent tells me that's twelve hundred, that's a thousand dollars a year with a twelve hundred fifty dollar deductible. Another problem we have are eighteen-wheelers up and down Underwood Road, uh, going into and from these warehouses. Road's not built for that, obviously, but the GPS sometimes take these truckers up and down that road. And so this proposed development will not help that situation obviously, it's going to make it worse. Developers asked, have asked our planning department three or four times in the past to develop this property. This came up to you three or four years ago, I was at that meeting. The same proposal, same proposal with warehouses and, and, uh, to be developed on that property. And so you turned it down then. You turned it down three or four years ago, the same development. Nothing's changed. It's the same proposal again. So our hope is that you're going to be consistent in what you decide today and turn it down again. Those of us who live on Couchville Pike, we, we've had to deal a lot with, over the years, with the, the way that's been developed. We're just simply asking, don't make it any worse on us, don't make it any harder on us. And so again, I hope that you'll come to the decision to turn this down again as you've done before. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have anyone else wishing to speak on this case today? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Lori Payne, I live at thirty-six thirty-two Rockdale Fellowship Road. And, uh, me and my husband built our home out there eight years ago, peaceful, loved it, moved from Eagleville. We had forty acres in Eagleville, wanted it out in size and not only is the flooding even where we're at gotten worse because of all the warehouses, I've called and complained, I'm not sure if it's to Tom or not or which person I've spoken to, but I called. And regards to your water ponds in front of Chewie's, holding ponds, whatever y'all call them down here, I grew up in the construction industry in Minnesota, my dad owned a construction company, we called them holding ponds, I think you guys call them water ponds down here. And anyways, and concerned, uh, on how small they were in regards to the size of the warehouse and the parking lot. They weren't big enough for the water runoff on those parking lots and those roofs. And still yet to this day, they finally did dig them out after I complained, they did dig them out, make them deeper. But the water still runs all the way down Couchville, right down there to Lacy's, it floods that intersection non-stop. It comes right, I mean, we go up and down that road all day long, that's how we get in and out of our home. You go down to our home and all the water comes down telegraphically because we're downhill from these warehouses. So telegraphically, it all rolls downhill right across my front property, which has caused all of my dirt from my front yard to flow out of my front yard. I just put three more loads of black dirt on my yard. And put a berm up. I put a berm with pine trees up to dry and stop, stop the erosion from all of this happening. And, you know, you guys even, you know, allowed another warehouse or land to be sold for another warehouse on Maddox, which encroaches on a spring that's two hundred and thirty-five feet long, that spring. When you put a warehouse there along that spring, it's going to encroach into our water and the wildlife's water. And where's all that water going to go? You know, you guys don't put any storm sewers in, you put what, a lot of these wonderful people, my neighbors, probably don't understand, the little storm systems that they're putting in don't do anything. They're, they're not, they're not moving the water appropriately, there should be storm sewers. If this is what they're going to have out there, they should put storm sewers all the way up and down the whole entire road system and pushing it into Percy Priest Lake or into someplace. And that's not what's happening. We're ending up with them, the water ruining our home values because we'll never be able to sell our land for what our land is worth. But yet we pay taxes on what our land is supposedly worth. But if somebody comes in and moves there and they come by and on a rainy day and look at our property because it's for sale and they're like, well, why would I want to buy this? It's got water all the way up to the house. It's got water standing down by the barn where I'm going to have my livestock or my horses. There's no area for my horses, that's what happens to me. My field that I have for my, I train German shepherds, show German shepherds. I can't use my field half the time when it rains because it's flooded, all because of this. But when we got that property, it was not like that. It would get wet, yeah, but it would disappear by afternoon. It doesn't happen like that anymore. I mean, it stays there for two days straight, total ponding. And, you know, it's not only that, it's the, it's the traffic, it's the, it's the, I, I mean, three weeks ago, I was coming up on Lacy's intersection and a lady swerved into my lane, almost hit me, I hit my brakes and swerved to the right of the stop sign because I was coming up with the stop sign. She hit a guy and kept going. I chased her all the way to the Smyrna Bowling Alley. I followed her with nine-one-one on the phone. And that's when finally a cop came. I'm not sure if she got arrested, but you can call up Smyrna Police Department. And I believe there was, uh, a Wilson County Sheriff that came out to the gentleman that got hit and that she left sitting there. And if, and if he would have been five more feet in the intersection, she would have T-boned him and probably killed him. She ran the sto, I mean, it's, the, the traffic, the semi trucks, I mean, I've been pushed off the road, I can't tell you how many times, coming home at twelve-thirty at night from a semi truck. And it's, our mailboxes get taken out, it's the garbage. I mean, we live in a million-dollar house. And, and that's ridiculous, we should not have to put up with, I mean, I've called, we've gotten, yeah, no semi trucks allowed on this road. No, no semi trucks, period, even down Couchville Pike. You stop that lake instantly, it, it will never happen because they're looking for the shortcut. They're looking to avoid whatever it is they're trying to avoid, whatever timestamp they're trying to make, you know, they're all on timestamps. So, you know, I mean, the, the flooding and just like the warehouse that you guys are looking to propose for Maddox. And, and then the rezoning of that other person's property on Maddox, they want to do the same thing. You know, I get it, everybody buys a piece of land and wants to benefit from it, but, you know, keep a rural residential, keep an acreage lot so people that want to become small-time farmers, whatever they want to do to it, they can have small farms there and live a nice peaceful life because right now, it ain't peaceful. When we first moved out there, you didn't hear a cop car one, you didn't hear a siren one. It's non-stop today. It's every day. If you look at the accident reports on Couchville Pike and Rockdale, Rockdale Fellowship, you'll find out how many accidents happen on that intersection at Lacy's. It's ridiculous. And our mailboxes get taken out all the time, people don't stop. It's two thousand dollars to put up a brick mailbox these days. You know, so, um, but yeah, as far as the flooding goes, the sinkholes are what absorb the water in our area and push it down into the caverns and then into the lakes and wherever else it goes. You know, you cover up them sinkholes and these poor people, they're going to need to put their homes on stilts to live and then need a helicopter to drop them in and out of their homes. It's no different than where I live. My house, I don't think is far from it and I, I'm maybe a half mile away the crow flies, if that. And the blasting, the blasting is ridiculous. I may, I did file a complaint with the blasting, with the, with the state. You know what they told me? They laughed at me. I have an eight-year-old home and from the Chewie's warehouse, I got cracks all over the place. I was sitting in my house, my pictures literally fell down off the top of my entertainment center, fell flat, I have pictures of it. Some were standing, some went down. That's what we deal with. It's not, it, enough's enough. If you guys all lived out there, you'd be standing right where I'm at today, doing the same thing that we're all here trying to do, save our homes, save our property values and, uh, stop the flooding, stop the nonsense. And to get off of eight forty on the Couchville Pike, you guys go up there at four-thirty in the afternoon, see how long it takes you to get off eight forty on the Couchville Pike coming from Wilson County, you will sit there for ten to fifteen minutes to turn. It's obnoxious. We live out there, we pay taxes. Do something about the traffic, do something about the flooding, don't let this become more commercial land. That's all I'm asking. Keep a residential, agricultural, small farms, five acres, you know, stuff like that. You know, five-acre parcels will sell like a hot cake out there all day long. You get two hundred and fifty grand a pop for a five-acre parcel out there all day long. So, you know.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Thank you.
Do we have anyone else wishing to speak on this case today? Both.
Good morning. Sorry about that. Trying to clear some space. Uh, Brendan Bowles, Kimmy Horn and Associates, uh, ten Lee Avenue in Nashville. I appreciate everybody coming out today and I'd be doing the same thing if I lived in the neighborhood. I think there was six folks that, or five folks that spoke, four or five, four of them were on flooding, two of them on traffic. I don't know what's going on with the flooding out there. Sounds like, um, maybe some things have changed over the years, so there's reference of never flooded and now it floods. I'm going to try and set this here so hopefully it does not fall. But this is, um, the drainage map showing the existing conditions, drainings, the, the blue arrows generally show the drainage pattern from north to south in this area. The three folks, I believe there was at least three that were up above us, uh, to the north that discussed the flooding. Obviously, I think you all know the drainage pattern from north to south and we're down below you. We will, we will not create a dam, we will not impede water flow going to where it wants to go, which is down towards Couchville Pike. And ultimately, it does go over there to where the loves is, into the creek, into the lake. I, as a, as an engineer, cannot design something that, that negatively impacts anybody's property. My hope would be to make it better from a drainage perspective when we leave. There are some closed depressions, some cars features that we're going to have to cover up to, to, to build anything on this site. I mean, this is Wilson County. We have rock, we got sinkholes, we got carstiology all over the place. I believe this road was rebuilt a long time ago with the state industrial access grant. The county and the city decided to bring the sewer down here, right, to support development. That's what has happened at this interchange. And it, I hope everybody would know that it's not all bad that has developed out here. Some of it has been good. There's been a lot of good companies that have relocated into Wilson County that have provided opportunities for people. The staff report that Tom wrote, the two thousand six land use plan gives commercial direction on this property. And that's what we're here to ask for, for the commercial rezoning. The, um, the buffer areas Tom mentioned, we showed twenty-foot buffers on the north and the west. And I think in discussions with, um, the developer, Division Street partners, we're willing to take that to fifty feet on the north and the west sides and, and leave the existing vegetation that's in place there. So I think the current zoning regulations require like a ten-foot buffer between commercial and residential in a C-four zoning district. And we're willing to take that to fifty and leave the existing vegetation that's in place. Now, it doesn't necessarily help with the flooding, but it does help with visual impacts and, and just the impact of the development next to you, right? I mean, you can't have a better buffer than, than to have what is, um, existing. Because you, I've seen a lot of buffers get planted and they just don't look that great for ten or, so just can you pass that around? This is the north side of the property, just showing what that possibly could look like. Our site is going to sit down a little bit lower in elevation than, um, the property to the north. So I think there's some benefit there to having that. Here's another, this is just a, a street view section from Underwood that shows the existing vegetation that's there. It's really dense, really thick, a lot of evergreens. I don't know that you'll even see this development throughout the year from Underwood or from the nor, north with a fifty-foot buffer, leave it existing in place and we can supplement on our side of the street. The drainage is everybody's main concern and is our concern too. We understand that we need to do some additional investigation, some additional analysis and work with the county and, and the county stormwater engineer to figure out how to try and improve the situation. The drainage patterns are from north to south towards Couchville Pike. The three property owners up, up above us are higher in elevation than we are, but there are some closed depressions on their site that could be backing up water or could be having some water they mentioned coming up out of the ground. So there are three injection wells down at Couchville Pike, they're corrugated metal stand pipes. You, if you drove slowly or walked by the site, you might be able to see them. Most people don't see them as you're going thirty miles an hour or whatever on Couchville, but I think when they realigned the road, they built these stand pipes.
They're in this vicinity?
They're down at the bottom. So we rearranged our site plan to leave those in place, put all of our stormwater drainage down on that side. They're down at the bottom. So we rearranged our site plan to leave those in place, put all of our stormwater drainage down on that side and provide as much storage volume as we can. And we're committed to testing those three injection wells, seeing how much water they accept on a gallons per minute basis. And then improving the ones that aren't accepting much water and trying to get that water back in that subsurface. And I think that hopefully will mitigate some of the drainage things that are happening out there. I can't promise or guarantee anything, except that we're not gonna make it worse for anybody. We might be able to make it better for some people by improving those sinkholes, getting the water down through the ground in a, in a faster rate. The county's stormwater requirements are pre-verse posts, which means pre-development flows must match the post-development flows. That's your outfalls through the two-year theoretical storm, through the twenty-five-year theoretical storm. We're willing to take that to the hundred-year theoretical storm in order to provide additional storage volume and additional protection for the neighbors downstream. So it's above and beyond what the county requires to help out with, with the drainage. I don't, I don't want to be flooded either. I know these people don't want to be flooded worse. You guys don't want to be flooded. And I don't want to be called to the witness stand in the case two years from now and said, I made it worse. So, if you have my word that we're going to do whatever we can to make it better from a drainage perspective. We have met with the road commissioner. We have met with planning. We have met with Commissioner Hobbs. We have met uh, with, with Jerry Warren and his group, had a, had a conversation with them. And we're committed to doing whatever we can to make it better. The road commissioner, we're gonna finish the road widening there between Aldi and Underwoods. You have a consistent three-lane section, uh, that'll benefit the community. And, you know, we're here to ask for your support today and for, for a positive vote for the re, rezoning. And still, this obviously still has to go to the county commission as well. So.
Thank you, sir. Do we have anyone else wishing to speak on this case today? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Danielle Gates. I live at three, three, two, five Underwood. Um, so I'm just right next to the Davis family and, um, Donnie's property. So I'm actually, what is that, four properties up from this? Um, I do have a quick question. Uh, Mr. Rashir, can you tell me when the warehouse on Lone Oak was built? Do you know when that, when that one was erected?
I believe two thousand and five.
Two thousand and five?
Roughly.
Okay, okay.
Is that the Prologis building, Tom?
Yes.
At the corner?
Two thousand and five, okay.
I believe that's correct.
Okay.
I'm, I'm not looking at the file, but.
Okay, okay. Um, so.
I know it's in the land use plan as an existing building.
Okay, okay. As an existing building, yeah. And the land use plan was approved in two thousand and six. I'm not sure that that land use plan anticipated quite the impact that this community would have with the flooding. My home was built in nineteen eighty-four. I have flooded three times since two thousand and twenty. It's ruined personal items, books, journals, movies, photos, heirlooms. It has flooded my crawl space. I have mold on my floor joints. It has flooded up to my walls. My insulation is soaked. I have invested in hurricane fans and I live in Wilson County. I know this is an impact from the warehouses that we currently have. And again, I'm four properties up from where this warehouse is being proposed. Um, we talked about the, the roads and the traffic under, Underwoods, a two-lane road. Having semis on that will absolutely damage it. I am really lucky that I was not the neighbor across the street whose entire garage flooded up. Um, I believe that was two thousand and twenty as well. Um, and my main thing is, uh, you know, we know that the engineers are gonna say, hey, we're going to address this. We're going to look at the flooding. We're going to try and fix this. Um, but it was made pretty clear by the first gentleman that was in here today that the developers aren't gonna say what they want us to hear, what, what they know we want to hear. And once it's approved, there's not a lot of repercussions for addressing that. Once that warehouse is there and there are flooding problems, they can say, hey, we can, you know, try and address it and we'll try and resolve it and all of these things. But I think it's been made pretty clear that, um, if we get into this, it will destroy homes and this community in Wilson County. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this case today? You've already had your opportunity, sir. I, I'm sorry. Mr. Hobbs.
Usually when I see you, it's not usually a good thing. The commercial growth in this area has impacted these people and these residents for a long time. I have a lot of questions that still have not been answered. Now, I'm not an old engineer. I got a lot of questions from Mr. Baden. I've been working heavily with Tom on this project along with another one. The flooding in this area is a very problem. And it has been a problem for years. We've, John, we've pulled hundreds of peoples out of that intersection right there. These people don't know that. They don't know why they do it for a living. But we've done numerous water rescues in that area right there for years. Uh, Mr. Robert Spigard had a good point last time. They were impacted in with water when his daughter Cassie was pregnant. And they had no exit to get out of Underwood or Lone Oak Road. They couldn't make it to the hospital. We had to get boats down there to try to get these people out. I don't think this gentleman can say he's gonna fix all the water problems. Uh, Mr. Davis said it best. I've talked to some really good people out there in that area that had a lot of common sense to them. And for the record, and you guys know this, how many warehouses have I passed in that area since I've been in office? One? One come before you? So for the record, for one of the ones in the back, I have not passed twenty warehouses since I've been in there since September. I don't think that'd be impossible. Yeah, very true statement. Worked pretty hard on keeping warehouses and development go great out there in that area. And I think there should be a plan. And I think you guys have done a great job on far, far as landing out on the opposite side of Couchville. But what it's impacting on Underwood, and I'm talking to former Commissioner Clint Thomas, his house did flood very bad last time during the floods. It was up in his front doors. Um, Sonya Robson says she's always had flooding concerns from the people in this area right here, especially the Davises and the Kirbys. Clint Thomas, and I don't expect this guy back here to say, or the developer to say, he can fix all the flooding issues. Cause the water is actually coming off that lime rock in the back and it's flooding it out. James Baden might be able to speak on this here in a few minutes. That's actually who I was waiting to hear. I've took Tom's recommendation and Christopher's on this whole scenario here. And I'd like to see a little bit more studies done just to make sure as far as being a county commissioner and for kind of behalf, that y'all would study this project a little bit more before we put all these houses right here underwater. And it's gonna put the county in liability. Y'all are the experts, James and Tom are on this. If it's coming for a positive recommendation through this board, I'm just gonna have to wait and see how, I'm not against development, but what I am against is in approachment on the citizens in this area. They've, they've, they have put up with a lot. They've had a warehouse at the warehouse, the warehouse thrown on top of them. Also, the family understands, lived up there for fifty or sixty years. And they have a right to sell their property. This is nothing but a, six, six holes on it. I believe when I saw the maps, me and Daniel have actually gone over this over and over and over again as far as the sinkhole and the water issues on this property. One for fire protection, two for community concerns and everything else. Like I said, I'm not against commercial growth, but I think there's ought to be some studies done as far as sinkholes, as far as liability in my place of sin. The developer did keep the traffic off of Underwood Road. And he made the exits in and out off of Couchville Pike. I did like that. He's not putting the traffic on Underwood. I'd like to see a red light placed at Underwood and Couchville. And something, traffic concerns do need to be handled. I was out there last night doing damage assessments and I got took on head-on with a tractor trailer on Underwood Road. Two days before that, it was on Lone Oak. Guys, you know, a school bus and a tractor trailer are not gonna be able to pass each other on them two roads. That's what I'm afraid of. And there is some blind curves out there. So I would, I would recommend do a lot of studies on this before we pass anything, just for the citizens review. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak on this case today?
Good morning. My name is Peggy Maples and I have two pieces of property on North Lamar Road. Um, I'm gonna kind of be all over the board for a second. I've lived out on North Lamar Road all my life. My grandfather's farm was there in the early nineteen thirties. Um, I've seen it all. And I have to say, this is the first time I've met these wonderful people. A lot of changes happened from Rockdale, Couchville Pike, Lamar Road, you name it. And a lot of good people are out there and they built beautiful homes. And for most, old farmers are still there. Or they've passed on and they've been given to their family and their family sold it to a developer. Sadly, I lost my grandfather several months ago. He raised me. He was a wonderful man. And I believed everything he believed in, and God was number one. And how you took care of your land and how you took care of your family. But the biggest thing is, since he's been gone, I've had fifteen developers coming at me. And they won't stop. I understand about developers and I understand about engineers because I have another eight acres in Rolford County. And I currently live across the street from a development similar to this. And I can tell you, I'm fifty years old and I know what Couchville Pike was like before any of these people. And trust me, when the dam was open before, all that area was nothing but water, a Percy Priest. There was a book that was written about our community. And those pictures are in that book. When people would walk for miles and miles to go to school. And we have underground streams that are currently still there, right under these people's homes. And on top of that, caves. There's three outlined caves that run from the back of my old mother's farm all the way to Lacy and spread it out. You cannot change an underground stream. You cannot change a sinkhole. You can bring a ton of rock in, but when you build something, what happens? It constantly sinks. Look at the Corvette place. What happened to it? It went underground. And they had engineers. As my grandfather would say, men in overalls built this community. Men in suits have destroyed it. I will say that. My question is, is what is the future development for Couchville and Lamar Road and on? Is there a map of the stores that are coming in? What are the other areas that are coming in that these people need to know? What is in these factories that are toxic and also cancer-related? That are gonna be put in here that these people don't know? Developers and engineers, they work together. And they have to prove a point that passes, but once it passes, we know there's tape over our mouths. It's done. We can't change what's been changed. Now, another thing too. What happens with taxes? What happens when you build it and we run out of money because all this development's gone through? But then they want more. They want sidewalks. They want lights. They want our farmland to be taxed. Our roads turn into the city, but our land stays in the county. So I asked for today for, they maybe, I don't know them, but they're still our community family. And I support them. And I'm asking you to please take consideration to sit down with these developers and sit down with this community for future development and current development, to hear them. I'm against it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak on this case today?
Uh, my name is Deborah Donegan and I purchased some property on North Lamar in twen, two thousand and five. About three or four years ago, we divided that property up, sold the house in two acres and built my forever home in the back. But I'm not gonna repeat what everybody said, but I agree with what everybody's saying, the traffic, the noise, the flooding. It's gotta stop somewhere. Um, the dynamite, you hear that. Somebody said something about talking to the people at the state. I called them before too. When I lived in the front house, when they first started all the development out there. I don't remember what year it was, but it's been some quiet years back. But they were saying it had nothing to do with the dynamite. But the cracks weren't there before, then they all suddenly appear. But it's constant all the time. The eighteen-wheelers coming down the road at night. I have a camera at my road. I'll see what goes on. Uh, you call the road people. They say, we've got signs up. Well, the truckers don't look at the signs. They just go by their GPS. And it's just, you know, they've gotta take a lot of the, everything everybody said in consideration. And I just wanted to say that I'm against all of it too. I was hoping I could live there forever. But it kind of worries me. You're later there in bed at night, instead of hearing the birds and the crickets chirping, you hear the tractor trailer trucks or the interstate traffic, cause they've cut down so much trees and everything out there. So, that's just what I wanted to say.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this case today? This time we'll close the public comment section and I will ask for any questions from our board.
I got one, Tom. It's about this case, but it's, it's about all the last bunch I've been looking at to come up here. When you send these notices to the road commissioner and to, to Weyman. And I noticed here you didn't send one to the sheriff's department.
No, sir, I don't think so.
I think, I, I know when I was sheriff, I'd get these things out and respond to them, or somebody would. So, I, I, I'm sure they would now. Somebody may be pressed a little harder, cause you hear all this stuff about traffic. And all that traffic stuff is real. And, uh, this, it would help a little better if we go forward, I think, to get a recommendation from them, just a, a checkoff. Yeah, I, I understand what's going on and, uh.
I don't disagree, sir. I, I can't, I can't control those, I, I can't control those agencies and what they choose to do or not to.
Control them. I just maybe ask them in a nice, in a real nice way to say, hey.
Yeah. Well, the, the road commissioner, for instance, at one time did attend these meetings. They, uh, they have, uh, since in recent years, judged not to.
Well, in the years past, when he was the director and I was the sheriff, we came to the meetings.
Yes, sir.
And if that shit was gonna be one that's controversial, all these here labels about traffic, it don't matter where it's at in the county, this is not an isolated situation. And the Weyman, I think, I'm, I'm very grateful for Daniel. And partnerships now that we have, having inspectors and so forth.
I, I will also point out that Global Utility District and the Water and Wastewater Authority have both chosen to take pretty, uh, uh, detailed involvement in our process as well, which is appreciated.
Chris, there's, there's no doubt labels in here all the time. I don't see a lot of ours and much, but I see a lot of. That was just a, observation, that's all.
Tom, a couple of questions. How many homes or property owners are involved? How many does this affect? I've seen, I've several here today. Does anybody have a count? Is there fifteen tracts or property owners?
No, I don't, I don't have it.
Twenty homes? How many?
Nine to eleven homes, just in that, in that, I mean, in that immediate area. These folks, these folks live way off from us.
We're a mile from you.
Yeah, exactly.
One mile from you. It's not a lot.
No, not a lot.
There's probably, there's.
Okay, so.
I mean, just around the area.
Let's, let's say, let's say that about fifteen tracts of land are probably affected by this. Okay, so give me an approximation, and I know it's difficult to do so. Maybe Tom has a better feel for that. How many acres are involved in the fifteen tracts that are affected? Is there two hundred acres, three hundred acres, fifty acres? How many? Do you have any idea, Tom, a shotgun?
No, I, I don't have an idea of that. And part of the reason I don't is because of the drainage sheds in this area. For instance, the sinkhole that everyone, that's, that has been referred to today on the opposite side of, at Couchville McCrary. Uh, I believe Chief Hobbs talked about doing water rescues there at, where Couchville and, uh, McCrary intersect. Uh, the sinkhole that floods that. The sinkhole that floods that area has approximately a twenty-seven mile, twenty-seven square mile watershed.
It's a what, okay.
So, the watershed itself may be rather large. Now, I do think that when Eight Forty was constructed, it affected the watershed
Yes, tremendous.
On both sides of the interstate significantly. So what TDOT did there, in certain respects, may have caused a dam. They do have some culverts that cross under it. I believe the engineer mentioned one that goes into the back of the Love's property from this side of the interstate that does take drainage from this area eventually across, back across Eight Forty to the east side and then is directing water in normal circumstances on down to Percy Priest Lake. And, you know, historic flood like 2010 or some of the other historically significant floods like 2020, which was mentioned, Mr. Com- former Commissioner Thomas's house. I too witnessed his garage being flooded then and in 2010. Both of those were storms that were beyond anything that we or any other jurisdictions that I'm aware of would've designed for.
I, I don't think anybody denies the flooding. I'm satisfied the flooding in the area was here when the Native Americans roamed this area. That's just the way that is down there. Hold your hand up. Is anybody in the group that's immediately affected have a hundred acres? Let's come down. Fifty? Twenty-five?
I have ten.
Ten? Okay. How many fifteen acres? Okay. I'm just curious, just trying to get a feel for the area. How many five acres? Twelve, alright. Okay. So...
And then there's multiple houses with just small blocks around.
So, we probably could say that the area that this might affect from a drainage standpoint is probably somewhere in the neighborhood of seventy-five to a hundred acres. When we took everybody, the roads and everything in that area. Let's, let's, let's be a little aggressive with that figure, but say seventy-five acres. Yeah. That's, in my way of thinking, that's two small industrial tracts that's affected. Two small industrial tracts in size. Now, maybe there's a hundred, a hundred and fifty people in that area, but there's probably two small tracts of industrial development there. I, I realize the concern about loss of property value. Maybe it is for residential. But it's not for commercial and industrial. The value of your property is extremely high for industrial and commercial development. That's why the state built the road to start with. It was a highly recognized situation that the distance between a triangular area between Nashville, Murfreesboro, and Lebanon was incredibly high and had great potential for industrial development. That's why the pressure is here. That's why it's not going to stop. It is relentless. You talked about how it was blocked once. It'll come again and again. It's too valuable. It's too valuable. It has so much potential. I've said it before. Three interstates, forty minutes from an international airport, conventional sewer, water, a four-lane highway that connects all of that together. That is the, that is the recipe for this area being coveted by anywhere in the state of Tennessee and probably in the southeastern United States. You live on an unbelievable area when it comes to commercial and industrial development. And that's why you wonder, why? Why are we, why do they keep after us? Why do they keep pushing us? That's why. It's just like human waves and a military advance. There's a wave in there that go away, there's another wave and they go away, and it's gonna continue. That's what I see in the area.
Anyone else, any other board member have any questions? If not, I will call for a motion.
A move we approve.
Motion approved. Mr. Jewell, do we have a second?
Second, based on staff recommendations.
A second from Miss Weather.
Ms. Chairman, I also make that amendment to my motion to staff recommendations. I'd like to include that.
So noted. We have a motion and a second to approve. Although, if you would, all those in favor, please raise your right hand.
Can I have one question or discussion before we do this? Tom, just reading this, your statement here, and I don't wanna go back and reread all of it, but it says, "Staff will note that there are several drainage issues that plague the surrounding properties. Immediately, area there, hot intensity and hot duration during rainfall. Planting staff witnesses water flow across the road in proximity of this parcel." Next one says, "Initial voucher plan shows warning. Warehouse development on top of sinkholes on the property which was strangely, which could, which would seemingly propose then to be capped and no longer take surface drainage of the holes. Staff has concerns about where the water would go." No communication from the road commission and those people, and that's probably a two-way street. I will talk to our people on that, but we need to press the issue. If we're gonna send them something and they don't, and they don't respond, then we probably need to respond back to them again and say, "Hey, can you give me some help on this?" "The county engineer has requested the applicant, the planning commission, and other entities parties be put on notice." "The district has no contact with the property owners, developers, and the project survey to discuss the proposed development on the property of its rezoning request. We don't know for sure what's going there."
That's Global Utility District.
Yeah, okay. So, so with all of these questions, how do we get staff approval? Because every paragraph almost has a warning to me. Every, every paragraph is a warning to me that with this thing, we got issues. But then I got staff recommendation, so, of disapproval. And then, of course, the developer got up and said, "Hey, I realize we got water problems. We're gonna, we'll go back fifty feet, we'll do a hundred year..." I mean, so if there's issues here, I mean, to me, I would think we'd wanna do more studying before we decide that this is what we're gonna say yes to. Just in my opinion. I know the district commissioner spoke against it as well. But, I, I guess, my question to you is, staff recommends approval, but all the paragraphs say different.
My, my, number one, it's, it's based on the land use plan that's in place right now. Call for this area to be commercial. And it, while it has been up and down the flagpole a few times and denied politically, the land use plan still calls for it to be commercial. As long as they don't, it puts traffic up and down underwood or low note. In terms of development of the property, whether it develops residentially or whether it develops commercially, we're gonna have to deal with the drainage issues that are on the property.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, no, no question about that. We've, we've had water damage from, from, from the beginning. We've, I've heard it till I've...
So, from a, from a perspective...
But, but I'm not, I don't wanna create another problem at this board. It don't have anything to do politically or not politically. I mean, we just gotta have common sense on what we're doing. I do, I was just trying to get to read the paragraphs from me, we're saying, "Hey, wait a minute, we got a problem here."
They are cautionaries.
But then we say, "Hey, yeah, that's okay."
That's why I put them in there. And, and the recommendation is based solely on the land use plan direction.
Let me, let me add a note here. You're right, Mayor, in reference to the flooding. If you deny this, that's, that's what we do or don't do. Then somebody comes in and wants to develop residential in there. We're gonna deny them too? We're gonna deny them too? And let me finish.
So, to answer the question there though, it's not that, it's not to deny either one. I mean, sometimes there's properties you just can't use, okay? But if we do use the property, if we do use property, then we just talked about planning. I mean, he talked about taking two things back.
But they fill swamps in all over the place and make good property out of it. But the point I'm trying to say, from a standpoint of development, if I was in the emergency services again and I had to deal with a flooding situation, I'd far rather fool with a flooding situation from a life standpoint, from an industrial complex, than I had a residential complex. Now, I'm not going to tell you that res- industrial is bad and you can get into hazardous waste and all that sort of thing. But if you're in, in a situation in a factory and you're in a manager and his impending weather coming, you're gonna get those folks out of there. If it comes to a residential area, it's crazy. It's crazy to get in there and get houses and get organized and get folks out. What I'm saying is, residential development, from my standpoint, the way I feel, is far harder to handle than dealing with residential and then commercial and industrial area.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd also like to follow up with the response to the mayor's question. I did reach out to the county engineer, the consulting county engineer, who stated that they, that the sinkholes could be capped. So I did reach out with those concerns. And they stated that they could be capped and mitigated. But in this instance, with the number of sinkholes present, a much better outcome would be to leave some of the sinkholes alone or mitigate with an injection well to allow them to take on some water. And that would mean a little bit different development than what the conceptual plan shows. So instead of showing this size building and this size parking lot, the building may have to be smaller and everything, but it's still the same land uses. So I did reach out trying to get some additional direction with regard to the drainage concerns I had initially. But respectfully, even though the county commission has required that we do this type of analysis at rezoning, the real work of detailed drainage analysis occurs at site plan or at subdivision development, depending on what type of zoning you've got.
Absolutely.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve on the table. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. We have two fours. All those against, please raise your right hand. That motion will pass eighty-two. Oh, I'm sorry.
No.
It will be denied, eighty-two.
I'm gonna make a comment just here if I might.
Yes, sir.
Here in the discussion part, if I want, about its cause. You know, this really didn't feel like it was ready to be here today, to me. I'm, I'm like the mayor, just, just some things in there that just, once I got, I heard about this project, but nobody's called me about it. I just thought, maybe it wouldn't be ready today, especially with the comments that were made. And I'm serious, but I know that area really well. I mean, I pulled people out of caves down there and I've been to all the flooding. I don't know where the worst part is, 'cause it's all fire trucks. I had a water at one time. But, so I, I, I know all about that area. That flood's been there forever. It always bothers me, when I hear they have to come up here, that the, that the contractor or somebody that sold them the property just didn't tell them the truth. It's just simple truth, it's been flooding down there forever. And the lady was right, I mean, it used to all be underwater till they built the dam. And then Eight Forty did it. I mean, county didn't do all this. We're, we're trying to mitigate all the things that went on because of what everybody else done. It just didn't feel like, I'm not saying I'm opposed to this work. I'm just saying it didn't feel like it was ready to be here.
I, I don't see what, I understand what you're saying. But I, I, I think delaying this and investigating, I don't think the investigations are gonna show any more different what there is than what we already have on the table. It may show light on it. It may get into the nuts and bolts, get down into the grass and some of these things. But I think honestly, the situation, we have seen this particular situation and scenario replays, repeated over and over in that area down there since the industrial development has been down there. The industrial development is good for us. Good for us as far as a greater good for this, for this county. And I don't think that you're going to find that much more different. You may amplify certain areas, but that's, if we wanna do that, that's fine. But I just don't think that that's going to merit much insofar as what's going on, given the, given the history we have of these kinds of issues coming before us here.
Sinkin Creek starts on my property. It's all underground, except for one sinkhole right there.
The applicant does have a right to appeal this to the county commission within thirty days. Is that correct?
They do, within ten days. They have to appeal in, within ten days, they have to appeal in writing to go to the county commission if they wish. If they do not appeal within ten days, then the matter is considered dead and they would have to reapply, pay, pay money, and we'd have to readvertise. So if the signs come down in ten days, you'll know that they have not appealed.
Thank you all.
Say it again, Mr. Chairman.
The applicant has a right to appeal within ten days, our, our ruling, to the county commission. If it's not, if it's not appealed within ten days, it's a dead issue and the applicant would have to come back before the, reapply and come back before this board.
That's correct.
Is that correct, Mr.?
That's correct.
And just, just for the record, the corrections he talked about making and the different things that we talked about, that we wasn't for sure about with sinkholes, all that can be rectified and be brought back. Right?
They would have to apply again if, if they, if they choose not to appeal with their current proposal on to the county commission.
Is there a timeline associated with coming back to the board?
Not at present. You could apply next month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Much smaller, much smaller.
Ma'am, we're, we're done with that.
There has, there, there has been discussion...
We are now ready for the site plan for Speedway Industrial Park.
Mr. Chairman?
At two, like twelve directional sign? I'm sorry.
Before we move on to the next item, I wanted to mention, there has been discussion about establishing a timeline of which, like if somebody comes here and they're denied and they don't appeal, there has been some discussion about a timeline within which they could not reapply. That is something for y'all to consider. The Board of Zoning Appeals does that, but the county, the county planning commission does not have that policy at present.
What is the policy for the Board of Zoning Appeals?
I believe you can't come back with a Board of Zoning Appeals case for a period of six months and then only with new information.
Okay.
So, but we don't have that.
You don't have that policy.
Yeah.
Can I add a question up here?
Yes, sir.
Is, when these drainage plans are submitted, they're site-specific, right?
Yes, sir.
There's no, is there any, like, out there, especially when we're developing all these warehouses, and we're taking a lot of permeable soil that we're completely doing away with. Is there any kind of master drainage plan?
There, there's been discussion about that. In fact, we are doing a core study on one watershed, Spencer Creek watershed in the north part of the county. If that goes well, there may be some possibility of funding continual watersheds all the way around the county. But beyond that, the, the primary drainage studies that we have come from FEMA with our FEMA floodplain maps. And then from development as it occurs, whether it's residential or commercial, we get watershed-based drainage evaluation with regard to that specific site. So, no, the answer would be no. And, but that never would come, I don't believe, at rezoning. That would come during site plan development or residential subdivision.
If you build a chicken house on your property, you affect drainage. You know what I'm saying? It's everywhere.
Well, isn't it our responsibility to deal with that? Well, we can't approve all these and then like just back up water and leave people's house.
Well, it's, it's, it's a little overwhelming to some extent. I don't know how far you can go with that. I don't know where you find anywhere that, that, that all drainage is managed. You know, you know, have you ever watched a drainage in your driveway? How it's spider webs across your driveway? If you, if you manage it here, it's gonna find another place to go.
You know, in the Midwest where there's flat fields, they put drain tiles and ditches and they get water going. Is this a master drainage plan? We're about to invest in something like that.
Well...
We can't just...
Well, I don't argue that fact.
I think that's a far over simplification of this problem. This was a, this was a hole to start with, before the interstate, before any of these buildings.
Absolutely.
It was a water.
So, what point would we say it's always gonna be a hole?
Uh, well, that, that's a question I don't have the answer to. That would be up to this committee and the county commission.
That's probably some of the most worthless land from a farming standpoint in the county 'cause the soil's so thin down in that area.
But it's a place for water.
Yeah, yeah.
There is very, very little of it.
And it's been, and it's been turned into an industrial mecca because of the way we've managed and done to this point. Doesn't mean everything's been done right. But that's very successful down in that area. They wouldn't still be wanting to come in there if it wasn't. They wouldn't be willing to take the chance of having to fill in caves and the crass areas and manage them if it wasn't so valuable from a commercial and industrial point.
There's no arguing that.
Oh.
That's not...
There are a lot of residents down there that...
And any residents that lives down there has a misconception to say, "I've lost my property value." No. It's probably three times worth more than it is from a commercial-industrial standpoint. And if some of these folks get, get together, five, six, seven, eight, ten of them, market their properties as a collective site and everybody gets what he wants, that's one way to handle it.
That's what they did there, quarrying Cowsville, didn't they? Didn't they join...
Several of them got together down there.
It's their, it's their sale also. But cause it's a hole too.
Well, I've been there, I mean, and when the water gets in there, it's not three foot, it's twenty foot.
I mean, they got together and done that because it flooded every time.
What a prime example of you were talking about, about managing, I think I'm right. What is the Los Angeles River? It's a concrete drainage point. It's massive, but they call it a river, but it's man-made. It's a management concept. You can do those kinds of things.
Are, are, do we need to take a break?
That's up to you, Chairman, Mr. Chairman. I'm perfectly happy to move forward.
We'll take a five-minute break, I apologize. At this time, we'll call the meeting back to order. Tom, I think we're ready for the site plan directional sign, Speedway Industrial Park.
Yes, sir. The site plan... The site plan, from planning perspective, meets, meets requirements. Global Utility District also wanted to make the applicant aware of their concerns that they will be involved in the development of the property, and their comments are as follows. "At the scale of the information submitted, it is not possible to determine whether or not the locations of the proposed signage will encroach on public utility and drainage easements, and whether or not the proposed signage will conflict with public water system improvements in the signage areas. The district respectfully requests that all proposed signage locations be fully staked in the field before construction of the signage begins, with the staking to show the limits and shape of the foundations for all proposed signs. The district also respectfully requests that we be notified when the staking is complete and given an opportunity to inspect the locations prior to the start of construction." And again, this is for directional signs on lot twelve of phases one and two.
Thank you. Anybody here wishing to speak on this case today? Any questions from our board? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion approved, Ms. Weathers, second by Mayor Hutto. All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Next item is nomination of officers, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that we nominate and elect by acclamation all of our existing officers.
Motion for Mr. Jewell, second by Mr. Ash, to keep the current officers in place for the upcoming year. All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Officer ship resignation right away.
You want to tell us about North Central Elementary?
Yes, this is on the agenda for informational purposes only. I had a meeting with the school system in the mayor's office, and it was determined, and the county attorney, excuse me, and it was determined that, based on case law in the state of Tennessee, that they are considered an equivalent jurisdiction to us, and there's technically no, I guess, authority that you guys have over the school system. So, from the perspective of, of the North Central Elementary, I can tell you that they are cooperative with the staff in terms of seeing to it that our staff engineer, or our consulting engineer in stormwater, and other aspects of county agencies get an opportunity to review their site plan as they construct it, but they're, they rely on their own engineers and their own board for approval of such.
Do they have a site plan in hand on that already?
I believe so. No, they've not started construction. But, that's just...
No, no action required on our part.
No, and going forwards, you may not even see it on the agenda.
We always had that position until a few years ago, so, okay. I'm good with it.
The following plaits are here for affirmation, they've been approved by, under staff approved, under staff approval, under state law that allows the staff to approve subdivision plaits of two lots or less. Resubdivision of the Thorn property on Horn Springs Road, I'm sorry, that's misspelled, it says Throne property, it's actually the Thorn property, on Horn Springs Road, it's in Commissioner Rusty Keats' district, and it's map one forty, it's map forty-six, parcel thirty-four point oh seven, zoned R-one. Subdivision of the Jerry L. Collins property on Couchville Pike, it's in Jeremy Hobbs' district, and consists of one lot, and is referenced as map one thirty-eight, parcel sixty-seven, and is also zoned R-one. Subdivision of the Larry Benton Canaster property on Berea Church Road, it's in Commissioner District Five, Jeremy McFarland's district, consisting of one lot, and it's map twenty-five, parcel thirty, and it's zoned A-one agricultural.
Okay, is that it?
That's it.
Anyone here wishing to speak on any of these cases? Do we have a motion from our board?
Some of them.